Welcome to the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. We are holding a live in-person meeting at ninety one Sawyer Street, Will Cup Commons. You can also watch our meeting on Cohasset one four three TV, on the Zoom link on the back of the agenda or Facebook Live. So can I have a call to order, Mr. Brady?
Paul Brady, present.
David Frog, present.
Ellen Mar, present, and we have a quorum. Oh, Chris Plex, sorry. Hi, Chris.
Chris Plex, present.
Okay.
Jack Creighton, present.
Yeah, Creighton, present. Okay, so we have everybody here. So because Mr. Plex is on remote, any votes we take tonight, we'll have to do by roll call. All right. So at this point, I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, is there any public comment? Anyone on online? No public comment? Okay. The next item up is the annual town election. It's May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five, at the Deer Hill Elementary School in the gym, two oh eight Sawyer Street. So we need a vote for that, Mr. Senior.
We need to set that as the location.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Deer Hill Elementary School Gymnasium at two eight, two oh eight Sawyer Street for our annual town election on May seventeenth? You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Frog, seconded. All in favor? Roll call, please.
Paul Brady, aye. Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Great. Okay, next up licenses, permits, and events. This is a continued public hearing on for a new annual on-premise all alcohol license and common victual license for Cohasset Harbor Restaurant on Border Street. There's a request to postpone until June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five, at which time, because of the duration of this open public hearing, we will re-advertise and repost for it. So do I have a motion to approve postponing this public hearing until June seventeenth? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Paul Brady, aye. Jack Creighton, aye. David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, next up is the seasonal annual license renewal for Split Rock Social, Inc., DBA Split Rock Social. It's three licenses, a seasonal beer and wine, entertainment, and a common victual license. We have their application in our pocket. Is there anyone from Split Rock here or online? This is a repeat from last year. Chief is not online? Nope. Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the application or the license renewal? No? I do recall last year, Tracy, didn't they come to us like in the late summer, early fall and request an extension of the season?
Yes.
Okay.
They are about to do a seasonal license.
Okay.
Right now, they just ask for the regular seasonal, so it'll end their licenses until October very first unless they come to you.
Okay. All right, since there's no questions and no further comment on it, can I have a motion to approve the seasonal beer and wine license for Split Rock Social? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Paul Brady, aye. Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. May I have a motion to approve the entertainment license for Split Rock Social?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Paul Brady, aye. Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. May finally have a motion for a common victual license for Split Rock Social.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Paul Brady, aye. Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, I'm gonna pass around the license application to sign. There's three. Okay. Next up, awesome, we're ahead of schedule, the recycling transfer facility update. So I would like to invite Brian Joyce and Frank up.
Make sure that's on.
Sure.
Tap the.
Hello, hello.
You gotta tap the little. Yeah, there, it's on.
I'll just.
Okay.
So with us tonight, the conversation is the RTF, and it's multifaceted. We're gonna talk about where we are. We're gonna talk about the grand enterprise fund and why we're talking about. Also, what we're doing. What we have is a small picture presentation, but some of the boards will show that we'll give some idea of something that'll be done. And this is all final, just to get a good.
Be off camera.
We're using chairs. So Brian Joyce, I was the director of the DFW, Frank Marchionne, Marchionne?
Marchionne.
Who's our consultant on solid waste. He ran dumpster depot for many years. He has long history in the local world. And he's been really valuable to us, both in reimagining the RTF and also reading policies and envisioning what we can do next. So we have a PowerPoint walkthrough. Obviously, we'll talk more about the boards here and also the concepts that we've kind of talked about. So I will officially start with Ryan to kind of walk through a little bit about what the RTF is and my support here.
Sure. So we'll follow the PowerPoint. So intro, what's a recycle transfer station? A lot of this is it's really the last few slides that are in there. Facility where recyclable waste is collected, sorted, and stored.
Have the mic with you.
Mobile? Facility where recyclable waste is collected, stored, and stored before transport. MSW separately connected, collected, and sent to disposal. That's all. Reduces waste efficiency, minimizes environmental impacts. Why is the Cohasset RTF important? It's recycling cardboard, paper, plastic, plastic too. It's an outlet for disposal. Disposal items prohibited from private trash hauling. Some hazards waste. Allows consumers to make their own trash costs, provide a secure disposal point. How is the RTF funded? We have the annual stickers. We have the paper thrown. We've sold it local vendors. And we pay, there are per item disposal for bulky waste items like refrigerators, mattresses, things of that nature. And for C and D, which is construction demolition, we have per pound costs for things that go in that trailer. And property taxes is the biggest subsidy subsidized the RTF right now. So why are we doing an enterprise fund, entertaining an enterprise fund, and opposing increases? It's because no revenue is generated by sticker sales, bags, and other charges. It goes directly to the RTF. General revenue is split between the schools and town. Nearly all recyclable items have no market value right now. The town's paying for virtually every thing we dispose of up there. Costs for bulky items have increased year over year. And actual costs to operate the RTF are not reflected in the current fees that haven't been changed since two thousand and eighteen. Challenges in the RTF operation. The RTF budget currently has grown past seven hundred thousand dollars annually. The fire that happened recently kind of highlighted our issues with the layout. You know, we're looking at an improved, more efficient load and rolling extremely and automating where we can. And to make the necessary improvements, the RTF needs dedicated revenue, updated workflows, and a fee structure that reflects the actual cost that the town's paying to dispose the waste. We're currently permanent for fifty tons of MSW per week, and we're generating less than thirty. So opportunities to improve, create a structure where costs are covered by the RTF revenues. Update the equipment and improve resident experience. We've already made a few improvements with the compacters since the fire. We want to maintain and bring back community elements like the scouts, fall return, boutique, which is very popular, and youth sports fundraising. And we're looking at new sources of revenue. Fighting potential neighboring communities to purchase a sticker or maybe even on off days have local collectors just going if we are below our MSW permit limit. Excellent. So the enterprise fund solution, we want to run the RTF as a self-contained operation. The enterprise fund, by definition, is it's the user fees pay for the operation. We want to create a separate RTF permit than the sticker that is currently being sold. Increase our bulky waste fees to reflect the cost that we pay for disposal of them. And increase the pay-as-you-throw bags fees to reflect those disposal costs as well. And again, identifying opportunities, bringing new customers to share the costs and generate new revenue. What's the monthly communities charging? Hanover has a three hundred and forty-five dollar annual permit for the RTF. Plymouth is one ninety and Citrus at one forty. So our proposed fee structure, the next few slides are the information that everyone will be interested in. We're proposing manual resident permit of a hundred and seventy-five dollars. That would be separate from the all facilities sticker that's sold now. That facility sticker will still remain to for the beaches, government island, and other town facilities. An annual out-of-town permit, we're proposing three hundred dollars. Pays you throw bags to reflect the disposal costs with the small bags, we'd get two dollars, large bags, we'd get four dollars. And we'd update all waste fees to reflect the actual disposal costs. And those fees would be updated with the signage room facility. Excellent. So obviously, everyone's got their own economics and their own household. We're just trying to take a snapshot of what it would cost a typical family versus a private hauler, because that's really what it comes down to. Everyone's the cost of disposing trash at RTF or just getting a private hauler. So we estimate that a family with kids, the annual permit's one seventy-five. If you produce three large bags a week at twelve dollars, it's an annual cost of six hundred and twenty-four recyclables for obviously dispose of those at the RTF. Well, so the estimated total annual RTF cost would be roughly seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Private hauler annual average is anywhere between a thousand and twelve hundred. Sometimes you can get a little bit under a thousand, but it's roughly a thousand to twelve hundred. Smaller household, again, the annual permit will still be one seventy-five. One large bag a week, that's an annual cost of two oh eight for a total of three hundred and eighty-three dollars at the RTF versus really the same private hauler annual average of a thousand to twelve hundred. Excellent. And so the extra charge items, with all these in many years, over a decade, for some, our refrigerators, we're paying close to fifty dollars, so we would increase that from ten to fifty. And you can, I don't need to read through all of them, but basically, a lot of these items, we're not making profit on them, but we're just, it's a pass-through cost for what the town pays for disposal. If you're ready to get rid of these, we're still evaluating yard waste because of the reconfiguration at the RTF. The compost pile is going to be truncated. Roughly, that area is going to be half of what it is today for compost, and the remainder would be used for the scouts, the, and we'll look at the boards in a minute, the boutique, the e-waste trailer, and textiles. And this is, I know it's off-camera for the this is basically the kind of a panorama photo of the RTF proposed upgrades as you're driving in in a counterclockwise fashion, so going from right to left on this, where the building burned down with three day garage, steel building, housed the the four vehicles associated with the RTF. The next structure is what was the compactor. We're proposing in that building a because we're no longer crushing glass for safety reasons and disposal reasons, we're going to have a closed, a roofed container that had sliding doors where folks would enter that building at grade, and they would dispose of their glass in a container on one side and their tin on the other side. So that would eliminate the handling of those materials twice by staff as they are now. And then the compactor for the cardboard is is a new compactor that Frank had set up for us. The main plastic is now a new compactor that's self-loading. The glass building that's currently housing where the glass goes is going to be a third compactor so that we can probably re-separate our paper and cardboard and get a better price. Right now, they're commingled. The area currently where the Boy Scout structure is and the e-waste and the textiles, that would, those would be relocated over to the relocated and reconfigured in new new structures. Over by the compost pile and the office building that's currently where the garage is shown on this picture would be in that area. The blue building where the pays you throw trash goes, that would remain the same. Some upgrades to the wall and the sidewalk in front of it. The C and D would be in the same area, and then as you're continuing counterclockwise around there, then you enter where the compost is separated in half. And there'll be a graded and likely paved area where you'd have these four box containers that you know, we can put shelving in, we can make them can accommodate, you know, whatever needs to be done in there for boutique. One would be for boutique, one for the scouts' trad can collection, one for the e-waste, and one for more. And then as you leave the facility, the compost again is on your left. So that's the general layout and the general I guess, price points we're looking at for the new enterprise fund. And I know there's going to be a lot of discussion with the increases and a lot of interest from the public, so I'll open it up to any questions. Frank, if you want to add anything.
Okay, well, thank you. The the general layout.
Want to hold that? Sorry. We're speaking to him.
So the general layout, we envisioned to make the facility more efficient, operational, but at the same time economical. So on that side of the the facility is your elevation. So our thought was to keep everything, all the commodities in one location because before the fire, the fire really gave us an opportunity to do a reset, you know, really look at the logistics, but the economics. So the staff handled the material way too much. Okay, so with the compacters, we are now letting the residents, the users dispose of the material once. So we gain operational efficiencies because they're compacted. But we also take the staff now, instead of handling the material, they're doing staff work, safety, you know, compacting the trash in the MSW pit. So all those units, although they're separated station, they're all tied in together. So we're trying to make a flow. Safety is an issue. It's a very, very small footprint. When I first got there, I was very impressed that management and staff actually operated the facility and pushed a lot of things through there. I believe you're taking, I could be wrong, but you're probably taking every wasteland item there is. That's excellent. That's going away in a lot of private facilities, so we're looking at that. You can only do so much with the footprint. Your permit, as Brian stated, the permit is a fifty ton per day. Right now, we probably average about maybe six or seven. So in order for facilities to make optimal economics, making money, run efficiently, your goal is to try to maximize that permit capacity each and every day. That's what makes sense. But while we're working, if you see where the compact is and the trailer are slotted, those are placeholders. So the beauty of the station, the way we're designing it, is if we come up to an obstacle that's operational prohibited, cost prohibitive, we'll switch it around. That's the nice thing about having elevation in one area, and we can we can configure the facility that makes both, again, logistics, safety, and economic sense. That's our goal. We, when the fire happened, the facility was shut down for a couple of weeks, and we were able to use a town-owned compactor with a little bit of improvement, and we got the paper and cardboard, your two highest commodities, up and running within a day. That's been working great. We had to tweak it. The second compactor that we put is the light blue one. That's a self-contained because of the the dimension of the compact and where it is, we were able to use another pad that's already there. Now that's plastics. And if you use the station, if you can recall, the residents would go up to the blue building in that little window, if you will. They would deposit the material in a bin, in a tote. Then the attendant would have to walk ten feet and then dump again. So now we've actually eliminated two or three steps. At the same time, we are improving the safety and the look. All the chutes are OSHA standards. They're high off the ground. They're lockable at night. There's a stop and start function button that we operate. And that's what we want to do and we want to carry it on. The four storage trailers, Chris had a great idea, envisioned, you know, the RTF village. And that's more of the social aspect. You have the scouts, the boutique. So we kind of separated where they were, kind of in the way of the flow, and we moved them to one specific area. And they are now all self-contained and lockable. Before, there were things outside. There were items left behind or whatnot. So we decided to use that because they're very customizable. And they're relatively inexpensive for what you're getting as a enclosed weatherproof structure. We'll probably run some electrical, but the boutique, the clothing, then like Brian said, the e-waste, we already have one. We'll move it over. So that would be in its own place because people tend to linger at the boutique. They might tend to linger at the scouts. We don't want them to really linger where all the real action is for safety or logistics purposes. That's our idea. That's what we envision, and that's what we're working towards right now.
Great. Anything more to add?
So I don't know if you want to talk about the insurance claim and how that's going. So tomorrow, we have what I hope to be as a final meeting with our public adjuster. Just to share some numbers, to get the RTF back up and running after the fire, we paid out almost two hundred thousand dollars to get it back up and running. And a lot of that cost is attributed to IT networking as well as electrical. We also have a bucket with the public adjuster for a loss of revenue, which will take care of the scouts. They were not operational for about five months. Is their primary source of revenue, and our insurance is along with that claim. So we're going to plan that. As far as building contents, what was in that blue building prior to the fire, it's about sixty-three thousand dollars worth of equipment that we're also claiming. And a smaller line item would be the consulting fee. Bring Frank on is also part of that claim. So the total claim we're looking at is upwards of three hundred thousand dollars, and that does not include any of the new builds. So it doesn't include the build-out of the building caught on fire or any of the small structures. So we're going to go over all of those items tomorrow and see if we can maximize our returns. But as of now, they've approved everything that we've sent to them, so we're hoping that we can increase the dollars for the blue building to rebuild it and get the reimagined facility that we're looking at.
Great. Thank you, Michelle.
And so this is something that a whole lot of people have been talking about for a while, working very collaboratively. In fact, didn't bring up, but there's been meetings with a group about to run the boutique. So we're excited about a volunteer group that I think will run a new boutique and really keep it vibrant. And also, just the ability to be able to close it up at night and work it would be better than we have today. So when we first talked to Frank, and Frank's a solid waste guy, he's like, what is this other stuff here? I said, it's Cohasset. You know, we have to preserve this, the boutique, the scouts. These things are all just part of the fabric here. At the same time, we want to put it in a place where it's going to be work, more safely. So if people want to hang out there a little bit, they're not going to stop somebody from, you know, dumping somewhere else, right? So if people want to come in and go, they can come and go. If they want to stop the boutique, there'll be some parking spaces they can hang over on the side. At the same time, we've been looking, and we've been talking about the RTF for a while, and it's just something we just kept pushing aside. We've had to do supplemental budget appropriations the last couple of years. This cost went up. And this forced us to really take a hard look. And when you take a hard look, you realize that we're not really matching costs here at all. I mean, and both from a literal sense, but also even if you apply the actual revenue, we get a hundred percent to the facility, which we can't. The system, yeah, the money comes in and it's split, right? And the costs just keep going up. I mean, I started here even, you know, we were getting more money in recyclables. Is it up and down though? But now we have to pay to dispose of plastics and glass. And we get a little bit of money on metals, and we get some money on cardboard and paper. And then the MSW, that's another challenge. One of the things that Frank's pointed out, I can't even talk more about this, is some of these smaller carters, when they pick up, they have to go and wait in line for hours at Braintree or Brockton. And if we can, Hingham already allows a small car to dispose at their own site, so they process it. So if they come to us for a little bit of an upcharge, they save a lot of time. So Frank thinks it's a real, I don't want to speak for him, Frank can talk more about that, but we've been talking about opportunities like that on a non-residential day, right? So if, you know, one of those local carters comes and dumps, well, that's revenue then that we're generating, and it's, I won't say it's free, but it's easy, right? And we already ship. It'll cover all the other costs that they're covering. So we're not looking to generate more waste. We're just looking to craft more of a through facility because it's here. It's not, it's not running efficiently and effectively, and the poor staff, as Frank was saying, they're running all over the place now with more of a theme and more of a, they can actually do better constituent service, also maintain the facility better. I think we're starting to see some of that, and and I think this will give us that opportunity. And really, the only structure that will allow us to, this is really one of the only services we do, right? We take a revenue and we sell, we dispose of things, right? And nobody, at the library or, you know, rec, it's different. You pay for a program. This is, and it pays with service. In this case, we have never really matched that, and we're at a point where we really can't operate this way. We're effectively subsidizing this one more than half a million dollars every year effectively, and it's at least, it's not, in the current budget climate and in the foreseeable future, it's not sustainable. So this became an opportunity to really rethink it and also try to keep it moderate. You don't want to, you don't want to stick a shot. You don't want to sticker shock people at the same time. You want to explain why there are real costs and we want to maintain this. And maintaining the RTF is really important. If if you don't want to have a reception table, or or if your car flakes out, that happens sometimes. You want to be able to have a place where you know you can do your garbage, or you want to be able to get rid of that mattress, or. Um, the, um, you know, the the computer monitor, or, you know, it's important to have that service for people. In order to do that, we have to make sure the economics.
Great, great, thank you. So um, we're going to open, I'm going to open it up now to questions. Um, start with Mr. Brady.
Brian, in one of his slides, and first since you provoked it, the sticker, you live. And what was the other part, Brian, that goes to the town and the schools?
So I I think, um, so Chris created that slide. So basically, everything goes into the general fund, and then that general fund is split between the schools and the thing. It doesn't go back into the RTF.
Raise the prices and help to maintain. Would some of that be able to allocate to the RTF?
Well, in an enterprise fund, it's all. So that's the thing.
Oh, right, on the enterprise, just speaking of today's.
Yeah, but if we did, if we did it today, you'd end up, sixty-one percent of it would end up going, I mean, none would. Would go to other things that have, actually, most of it would, because it doesn't get split up until even anyway, so. The only way to really match expense to the cost in in would be to set up something like that.
But that would all go directly to the RTF.
Right, so, yeah, right, water and sewer are our local enterprise funds.
So I'll I'll give you an example. So if we look at the budget through twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Uh, which is six months into FY twenty-five. Between bags, recycling, bulky waste and C and D disposal, we budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. All right. We have generated a hundred thousand dollars in revenue, but that's just general revenue. And sixty percent of that approximately goes to the schools per our financial policy. So even though it looks like, oh, there's a hundred grand to help offset the seven hundred, it's really only forty thousand. I want everyone to understand, you you know, the math, if they if they were to see this, it'd say, well, what are you talking about? You've got plenty of money. Well, you you don't. Because of our financial policies with the revenue um split between the town and the school side, that's why it doesn't all go.
You have a very, very important asset here in the transfer station. Because they're like waterfront property. They're not building any, no transfer stations, you know, so it's a very valuable commodity. And I think the town should retain that. So it's very important because there there's other um. Non-monetary values that it it provides the town. Um, say convenience, okay? So if a private. Trash service, it's once a week, specifically, fills up to your home. The 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 station gives you thirty-plus hours of disposal time. Um, also, there's the environmental impact. Um, I know when I was running trucks. People don't like big trucks in their neighborhoods. So now you have multiple haulers, multiple trucks. This, um. This is a less environmental impact uh stress on the community. Because you're bringing the waste here. Uh, it it's, it's. It it's, it's something to be uh discussed because the the facility. Allows you to take waste bin items that you normally wouldn't be able to get rid of. Even if you limit that, you know, there's a place for it. Those factors, you might not be able to put a dollar amount on, but they're high in the value list.
Do you have any more questions?
No.
No, Mr. Creighton.
So in the enterprise fund. What I'm seeing is these fees will cover the entire cost of operating the RTF.
That is correct. That's the goal.
Doesn't, and if there's excess?
If there's excess, I mean, I'll defer to Chris, but it'd be like the uh. Water and sewer goes to free cash and then you could.
Well, I, so, um. Theoretically, if there's any significant excess, it would go back to the general fund. Um, that, I mean, I I I love the hope we get there someday. The goal would just to have it be balanced. Uh, and and the way it would be set up is that the fees would would cover the expenses. But I.
My understanding is that it is. That, well, is there a meth, a method in which we can take the excess revenue and hold it into a stabilization fund? And when that reaches a certain amount, can we reduce the fees? Because we're obviously. Providing that service for less. I don't want it to be a moneymaker. I think it's going to be very controversial. And I'm just wondering is if the, is there's a financial structure that allows excess revenues to be. Kind of put into a uh short-term stabilization fund year to year, but ultimately, if there is a. A real surplus to reduce the fees. So we could actually set that in the, in the enabling legislation.
We use that with stabilization fund for the.
But then as you deplete that, then you, we're back to where we are today and having to raise fees because it's not, it.
Well, you wouldn't fund it until you you would set it up. You don't have to fund it. So, but we could, we could create it contemporaneously.
Yeah, only what I would, what I would do is I would have it at a certain point. It would have to reach a healthy balance. And at that point. Then there'd be whoever's the governing on the RTF board. Would have instructions that say, when you reach a certain point in the stabilization fund that. Maybe you're, we're safe for a couple of years. Then fees would go down. I think that would be very popular with the townsfolk who are going to be howling when they look at this.
Yeah, and and I just want to say that, so we did model several different, you know, we created a spreadsheet with, and we we modeled. Multiple different bag prices and multiple different sticker prices with an assumption of some people will. Might say, hey, I'm not using it. So maybe, you know, with with percent of reduction of customers. So we're. We've, we've created a lot of different models and we landed at these. It wasn't just double it, you know?
Well, our, our goal was to be market sensitive. I mean, i- if not. The low-cost provider, pretty close to that. Um, you know, breaking even is good. You know, we we don't have to make profit, but uh there are certain um costs that haven't been raised in a while and. Disposal facilities, um, every year, they'll they'll price increase. And then a few years ago, there was this added. Tax added uh uh price increase in the form of an environmental and fuel surcharge fee. So all these factors, uh they sneak in there and and before you know it. Um, your, your bag that you're selling for two dollars might cost you four dollars out the door. I mean, you just, it's not sustainable. It's just not.
Mr. Frog?
I've got a few questions. First of all, thank you for all the work that everybody did on all of this. Um, and really re, trying to reimagine uh the RTF and bring it up to date and bring in some efficiencies in there to bring. It to the, in into the twenty-first century from what it was before. I don't know what century it was when it, when we previously had it, but it certainly wasn't the twenty-first. Um, but with the, I I like a couple of things. I like the trash compactors creating the efficiencies. Um, it certainly increases the, not only efficiency, but the safety for the employees and and for the people as well. Um, I I would ask a a few questions. Uh, regarding the stickers, is it, my understanding that you're splitting the stickers. It's going to be in all facilities and a, an RTF sticker. Um, one of the things with that is, I think, that needs to be considered is that a lot of people get the all-facilities sticker just because they want the beach. But they don't use the RTF. Um, it's my understanding that Avalon has dumpsters there. So you're talking about two hundred and twenty units that have no reason to get an RTF sticker. Um, that would just get a beach sticker. And there's other multi-unit condos in town and things like that that have. That already haul away with a dumpster. And the only reason they get a sticker is for the beach. The RTF, maybe they go there a couple of times a year if they have things to drop. So I think we we might lose some revenue in in that. Uh, in that, in that equation. Um, and you you can talk about that if you want, or I can. Run to the other questions, or if you want to talk about that first.
So that's one of the, the one, that's one of the questions. Uh, so, I guess how many would people would buy it? Um, so. We've been estimating, uh, right now, this is, we sell over six thousand um, uh, card stickers, a fair number of them for the beach, right? Um, and we do know that from our back counts, because we don't track every single person who comes out of the RTF unless they're violating. The criminal violation. Um, but our bags sales have been pretty consistent. So uh, we're doing, again, I don't. It's fifty. Yeah, about fifty-seven thousand large bags. I'm sorry, fifty-seven small, eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven thousand.
That's what, pretty consistent. Um, so we think there's, there's clearly steady clientele. The other piece of it. So we we we've estimated a much lesser number. We wouldn't expect the South Six, we're looking at probably twelve fifty to fifteen hundred. Maybe, uh, which is about half the households. Uh, because, you know, when you, most of the cows, most of the town is single-family residential. I mean, you're, you're right, there are, there are those. And and the estimate for Brian is that, and Frank is that maybe a quarter or less than a quarter of the residents have private pickup. It seems more ubiquitous than that. It 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 doesn't, doesn't seem that, that.
It's a very small amount. Uh, coacid is unique because again, you have a facility, Hingham and Citroen. Though, in my, my private life, um, if I had seventeen hundred uh homes. Uh, coacid might have only represented ten percent. Uh, and that's pretty common with all the haulers because of. Our competitor is the station. So that's, that's a fact of life. Um, but there, there is a certain segment of the population that will use the facility. Uh, they like the convenience of it and they like, the the biggest factor is, is the pay-as-you-throw model. Is probably the only model in the industry that allows the generator to control their. So, you know, if you have. One bag, you pay four dollars. You know, the ninety-six gallon tote is a straight, is a set unit of measure with a set cost. Whether you're on vacation that week, you put two bags or whatnot, you get a set cost. The pay-as-you-throw model allows. The generator to to really control, and that's the key. That's, that's, that's huge. That's very, very important.
Yes, and the next question I had was is regarding the uh fees, I I think it, well, obviously, there, you know, there's some issue with. You know, sticker shock, I think some people would have. But regarding for the individual items, I mean, when you, there's a, there's certainly a price point with some of them. Where people will just become delinquent and say this is too much. I mean, so the microwave, it's going from five dollars to fifty dollars to get rid of it. So, you know, at what point do people say, well, I'm just going to chuck this in the woods, or I'm going to put this in the dumpster at the Red Line Inn, or I'm going to start, you know.
Put it in a blue bag.
Or or if they put it in a blue bag and just chuck it. I I I think that, you know, we, there's definitely, I don't know what that amount is, but I think there's. There's an issue because it is going to, it's going up ten times what it is now, yeah.
The one thing we also want to do is educate people into their alternatives, right?
Yeah.
There are a lot of places that take these things. In fact, a lot of retailers are required to take things back. Tires, for example, right? I mean, if you go and get your tires replaced, you pay a couple of dollars and they take, they have to take the tires back.
Yep.
A lot of, uh, a lot of electronic retailers now are also required by law to take things back. And sometimes the paint, right, the lug, that. Replaceable item in, unless they, you know, some places, if they bring you the TV, they'll take it a little way. So I think educating people into that i- is really important as well, because there are all alternative sources for disposing of a lot of these. We're like, we we want to be there as a convenience. Same with mattresses, you know, you get a new mattress, it's still falling away. Um, that said, that, that, we do want to make sure that we're we're not crazy priced at the same time as a cost to dispose of them. Um, and we don't want people to.
Yeah, you know, that, that, that's good. Uh, the final one I had was just regarding, um, sort of the 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 village there where you have the boutique and scouts or something like that. With the containers, are those going to be big enough so that, you know, because I see container shelving on both sides of people going to be able to get in and out of this? Uh, you know, if there's more than one people, if there's people coming into the.
That's a great question. So, um, we would purchase uh the empty container, if you will. So. Uh, I think I I showed that to show how customizable it can be.
Yeah.
Uh, for the boutique, I don't really have a great uh. You know, history of it because when I got there, unfortunately, it it soon burnt. But. Um, for the items and looking at other communities, you really want a place for, to exchange goods. So it's an eight-foot wide container shelving all the way down um twenty feet. It's a lot of room. It's almost the same square footage, I believe, as the structure that was there before. Um, but they utilize it a little bit different. This would be a little bit more organized. Uh, I would probably envision maybe um shelving on just one side. And the doors open up both ways, so you have eight, eight foot. Um, of access.
And and I realize this is just popping out of the can tonight, but I think it would also be good to uh talk with the. The boutique group that's looking into it, if this is going to sort of be, fit the needs. And the same thing with the scouts, uh because. I I know from doing it from years past, that the previous one they had had a lot of bottles in it. And so. They might need two containers instead of one in the, over there. But uh, and the final thing is with that area, I think, um, even though it's designed here with some pictures. I I I think you're going to need it either, either striped or have some type of railings, you know, safety-wise uh to update. But other than that, because I think there's going to be a lot of action there, a lot of foot traffic. You know, you know, as you, as you design, there's two areas of foot traffic over where you're. Dumping all the plastics and everything. And then over there is going to be the other area, where it's going to be a lot of foot traffic. But it also runs into where people are coming out. You know, as as they swing around. So I I think safety-wise, it just needs to be, you know, looked at from that perspective.
It's really important that this all get, that one of the, the end goals here is to re- re-strike it, new signage.
Yeah.
And to make it nicer. I mean, uh, I mean, it's not going to be a garden at the same time. There's no reason that the, even, you know. In, with the, with the, with the storage containers, they can be painted, right? They make it, you know, people can do logos, they can be art, art on them, right? I mean, I think there's ways of doing things. And by the way, there's alternative things too. We don't have to, I mean, those are a, a, an easy option. But, you know, there are sometimes mobile, you know, old mobile trailers to, to psych there as well. So it's other things we can look at. Uh, if people are willing to, it'd be great.
The final thing I had was this, on the, on the mobile office, is there going to be a hookup of water, uh, you know, for bathroom facilities, or anything for the staff? Or uh, is there anything that can be looked at regarding water? Bringing in a water line, because I know the water department uh uh has redone the water main over there by the DPW.
That's right, yeah. So we um, we just looped that, the C, so Cedar Street, the northern section is now looped. Um. And we left a stub pointing in the direction of the RTF. Uh, we have a price uh to get water out there. Unfortunately, like a lot of places in town, it's all ledge. So um. The cost to bring up water all the way is about a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and obviously, you're going to bring sewer back down to where the septic is. We could put them in the same trench and sleeve the sewer because it's within ten feet, but uh, that's, that's the cost we're looking at and we're weighing. You know, currently, we have a tight tank system that's temporary, you know, so we're. We're going to have some facility, but we don't know whether it's going to be a tight tank with some, a water tank or. You know, it'd be nice to have uh plumbed water, but again, there's a cost is a factor.
Thank you. I think that's my question.
Mr. Plex?
Uh, so David mentioned sticker shock. Jack said people are going to howl, and I think you're both right. It's going to be costs that's going to bring people out of the woodwork, unfortunately opposing this. I think it's a great idea. I think it's the right way to go. But we got to think about how we message the pricing and the cost. Uh, so. Thinking about that in particular, the thing that jumped out at me during the presentation was the cost of those extra items. The refrigerator, the microwave, the air conditioning unit. Uh, can you help me with how you came up with those costs? And and I'm thinking about that because I just want to make sure when people come to us and say, this is crazy, why is it so expensive? We can say why, you know, if that's the actual cost, or if you were, if you were to fill a storage container to capacity. That's what it would cost. Is there some logic to that, or was it just a reasonable number?
Yeah, so the, I mean, we we weren't looking to make anything on them. It was just a pass-through cost for what we pay to, for dispose of each of those items. And. Um, again, we've been developing this for the past a couple of weeks, really honing down, but we're, we're going to continue doing that into town meetings. So. If there's a way to reduce those or get a better price on any of them, it's going to be strictly a pass-through with no. No surcharge or upcharge on any of those items.
We, we, we took, we took a look at other facilities, what they charge, other stations. Uh, it also uh, the, the cost to get it picked up at your home. You call the one eight-hundred gun shot. All or whatnot. Uh, so we try to put uh an average cost on a homeowner that can expect. To, to pay if he were to go outside of the station. So we just try to be uh right at, at market.
Okay. So it's market and it's our pass-through cost, or is it?
So, so the proposed, the sum there are, are a little bit less than pass-through. For example, uh, the. The fee for a propane tank, um, a, a station is fifty. We don't really. Know what that is because that, you can't haul out a propane tank. You can't throw it in the metal, uh, they don't want it. Um, so we put it as a placeholder because perhaps we can reduce that cost. Um, Obershon Hardwist, all right now, ten dollars. Um, Obershon Hardwist, oh, right now, ten dollars, you know, for, for propane tanks. So we're trying to see what is the cost that you could go to, uh, the folks, go to market. But obviously our goal is to lower those costs, uh, wherever possible. Um, the perfect case scenario is the, the waistband items when they hit the mattress and box springs. A mattress and box springs, they're treated the same. Two different makeup, but the compositions are, are different, but they're treated the same. Um, there are services that come to your home for a hundred dollars. If they have multiple stops in the town, uh, say on a monthly basis, it might be fifty to seventy five. Uh, but one mattress i- is a hundred dollars. If you take it in a container, uh, that you clean out your home, there's a surcharge. Uh, so those are the numbers. That's how we came up with those, uh, uh, fees.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure when we're explaining to people why these things cost what they do, we're explaining it in terms of what we're paying. So if, if that propane tank costs us fifty dollars to dispose of, if somebody drops it off at the RTF, I just wanna make sure we're communicating that to people. And again, thinking about the communication plan further. If there are cheaper options, absolutely advertise that and say, hey, unfortunately, we have to charge you fifty bucks. But if you go to this other place, it's ten bucks. So, you know, make your own decision if you wanna spend the extra forty bucks. So that's one. And then the other one was, um, I've been surprised at how many people have reached out to me regarding the boutique. So we just need to be thinking about that. There's a passionate group in the town about the boutique. Um, we love them when they have stuff that we like. We hate them when they're in the way of getting through the RTF. So we just gotta think about that. I like that you're thinking about managing the traffic, uh, but we might get a negative reaction if we say, here's your storage container. I think, I think people are looking for something a little more than that. So it, it's worth thinking about and maybe even reaching out to the community about what that might look like in terms of a new boutique.
Approached and we've met a couple of times with, um, a group that call, that they're calling themselves the Friends of the Boutique, and they meet, have met regularly, and they've toured different boutiques or swap shops at, at other towns. And we, we're gonna continue conversations with them. Um, I don't know that we specifically went through the layout of what these storage containers might look like, but, um, you know, they've been good conversations and they've been amenable to, you know, these, this kind of idea of a, uh, community area.
And, and if that group says, hey, we're psyched about a storage container, just let us paint it. We're done. I just wanna make sure we get the.
Right, um, so I have some questions. So on, on the permit, me, it's very palatable at a hundred and seventy five dollars. I would request that we look like we do on the all facility sticker, look at the senior discount of, of some sort. Um, because I, I think that will relieve a lot of angst over it. I think, Chris, you and I talked about the fact that there will be households who typically buy to all facilities, and now maybe one vehicle will have the RTF sticker and one will have the all facilities. So there'll be some net loss on the all facility stickers hypothetically, that we need, we need to account for. Um, I too also have concerns about the, the, the extra charge items and increase. So I think when we get to the point where we need to present it, we need to have the actual cost of disposal right next to what our fee is going to be.
Sure.
Okay, and, um, and if you footnote, like, who you dispose it to, and you put the name of the company, and say, ABC Cycling charges us fifty dollars for a television, we're charging you fifty dollars. I think it's really important that it, it isn't, doesn't appear to be, um, perceived as, as a cash cow part of this enterprise fund. Because that's the only way people will go for it. And just, incidentally, it's interesting that Hingham, I looked quickly this afternoon, Hingham, Situate, Norwell, all their fees are very compatible with where we are now on ours. So we have to be prepared to discuss that as well. Now, Hingham is easy. They have a much larger commercial tax base. And they can, um, they can absorb those kinds of things, but we need to be prepared for all those kinds of questions. Um, Chris mentioned there'll be, um, paving and restriping. Will there still be the, the inner double, um, like in the center of the parking lot, the, the rows of parking?
I think you still. Yes, I think we have the, the rows of parking and then parking over where the recyclable kind of disposal area would be.
Um, okay.
But, you know, we'll also be pushing parking into where the compost pile is after that's graded and, and, um, some under drains put.
Okay, for people who want to socialize in that particular area, because that's also the egress from the, you know, if the loop is the same, is the loop gonna be essentially the same?
Right, the flow will be counterclockwise, essentially the same with center parking and also parking around the perimeter where
Okay.
you know, you dispose of items.
Yeah, just, and I know it, it's a rendering, but those look awful close to the, the, um, egress there, the outbound lane.
Yeah, I, I think, um, just for, I guess, uh, clarity on the, on the picture, they're, they're shown there, but they may, they may be configured in a way that they're, they're perpendicular to, uh, where the parking is and not, not facing kind of the, the loop.
Okay.
Again, it'll, it'll, uh, depend on how we can move the compost over. We're gonna put some bin blocks in there to support the pile and then pave on the, this side.
Okay. Okay, um. I wanna thank you both and, and Michelle and Chris for all of the work on this. I mean, it, it's, it wasn't a blessing in disguise. We had the fire, but it's about time that, that we have an upgrade here. Um, I completely agree that it's an asset to the community and, um, I know people who go up there just be- because they like to see people, you know, and, um, it's important. I do have a, I have had a request. So in the blue solid waste building, you know, where we throw the blue bags, is there any way to put a chute in? So because paving them over the fence for some people could be challenging.
So I think the, the problem with the chute is we have staff that actually, uh, compact that, uh, container. So in order for us to maximize the loads going out, we actually, um, take the backhoe and we press it down. If there's a chute, then it would prohibit, uh, the boom, if you will, from going over. Um, but one of the things we've, we've talked, uh, with the staff in our training, I think now that we're out of the, the business of handling material, we're more visible and our goal is to help, uh, to see if there's someone struggling, if there's somebody with a heavier bag, you know, we wanna be there to help throw into the chute or over, uh,
Okay.
the fencing. But, um, it's a great question. I'm not so sure that.
Yeah, that, that wall, you know, that wall's been looked at, uh, for several years. Currently, there's, it's really a tennis net that's been reconfigured to that, and we're, we're looking at reconstructing the top of that wall to have possibly three different openings with netting. But, um, OSHA and, and safety wise, you need a, an elevation of, uh, you know, forty two inches.
Okay. Mr. Grady, you have another question?
I could throw something at that, you know, see it over in Hingham. So, um, I'm gonna pair up with some of my colleagues' say. What about one of those slides, Brian? You know what I mean? It just like drapes right over. Not a slide to go down, but it only probably about three feet. So if you get your bag to the thing, it just drops in and it flows into the container.
Yeah.
That's all, you know, it's almost something that you could see, you'd sling it right over the railing. So you get it there and you just let it go and it's gonna drop and it's gonna find its own.
Yeah, so Situate has a similar type thing, um, and if any of you visited when they let us in there for, um, you know, when we had the fire, um, so we're look, we're looking at reconfiguring that wall and it, you know, whether it's a chute. One, one issue, I, apparently, uh, a couple of decades ago, there was some sort of chute or something there that was ripped off with the container coming in and out. And, um, and also the backhoes, like you said, we, we compact the trash so that we can maximize the loads that we put out, so we reduce our hauling costs. And, uh, it's really just, it's, uh, you know, they flatten the bucket and they push the trash down. And in that act, sometimes they grab things that might be sticking out over the load, uh, like the chute.
Yeah, we're. First off, let me emphasize, I think it's a great plan all the way around. Um, I do agree with Alan, is we've got to be able to answer all the questions about the cost, because they are big hikes. I wish, you know, hindsight, having twenty twenty vision, we done ten dollars a year or something like that, but it is what it is. Because again, like Hingham, they go over there, they have a bigger tax base, it's free. I used to dump for years because I lived there. And, um, you know, just love your air conditioner, stuff like that, some people are gonna wonder. So I agree with the signage. Is getting it up is, um, what it costs to take your air conditioner, say, to wherever you can take it to get rid of it. And it's free on already kind of chemical in it. And I am gonna jump on Mr. Ferrari's comments, um, the trailers, aesthetic wise, you may run into some difficulty, you know, in that, because I understand what you said about that. I just maybe, if you look at other options, I know there's a strong sentiment for the boutique, um, but people going in and out of the trailer. I mean, for me, myself, being, being on the airplane, I get claustrophobic if I feel people wrapping around me. And so using a personal approach, so something that has maybe perhaps like the old boutique did, but, you know, you sling open the bar and door, you see what I'm saying? So it's open to the public. I mean, it's a great concept, even painting it, but I just think you might run into some difficulty with that, because even going in that, I'm speaking personally, I wouldn't go into it, you know, because I feel too tight and too constricted.
It's too, it's too this way. I mean, if you could pivot it horizontally and, and I know you can't with a container and open up the side, the, the long side.
That's customizable.
If they could, if you, like, spring it, spring it open, like you do one of those, you know, uh, carnival stands, you know, they flip it open, you're open for business, there's your, there's your fried dough.
Sure.
Um, that's all, just, I'd say, just aesthetics to get people to, even if they're walking by and they're able to work inside. I'll say for the boutique or say for the, for the scouts, I mean, I, I can't see anybody wanting to spend more than amount of time. If I'm a scout, I'm putting bottles up for recycling to generate some income, spending the time in there on a hot day, you know, just, I'm saying just for ventilation purposes. Just if there's other options, again, I'm gonna emphasize, I think it's a fantastic plan what you guys are all putting together. It's just getting it to the public, got us, seen some feedback on that and, you know, again, so it's important that we educate people as, as, as the bank, they're getting for the block.
Mr. Gray, did you have?
Got a couple of quick comments. I think something, you need to figure out a way to make it easier to put the heavy bags over there. Because, you know, they'll break and I'm sure that the garbage is going all inside the, uh, container. I, I don't know how it's gonna be done, but I think, you know, people are struggling with that. You know, they're now gonna really overflow, fill the bags and move it from the car. But anyway, that's your job, but I think that's a very important point. With the boutique, um, the reason when it's sideways is because then people are outside looking at all the items inside. I think that's important. And I also think that the scouts having to go in and out, even though I understand the containers can be a very useful and cheap way to get kind of indestructible. It, we, we may have the tail wagging, the dog on that. And the other thing is, are you gonna continue the, where the Christmas trees are done in the back? And is that space also available for some of the composting? Because if you take away all the composting, you're still gonna have the same amount of yard waste and whatever. Can you reposition some of that to where the Christmas trees are put back there?
Um, so the, the composting we're getting rid of, and, and the compost should only be leaves and, uh, grass.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been, made a concerted effort the past couple of years to get rid of all the woody vegetation, and that's what's down below where the, where the Christmas trees and the brush days are held. So we're gonna keep that kind of woody vegetation chip pile back there. And the compost, uh, we're just gonna make more frequent, uh, I guess, disposal runs with it.
Okay, great. So you don't need a vote from us tonight? No. So we just need, we're gonna have the insurance, um, meeting tomorrow. We'll get, have a better sense of cost for rebuild, what they're gonna, what they're going to do. I think you have consensus from the board without a vote that we like what you're doing for the town. We have concerns about the fees and would really like you to do a, a little bit more homework. I'll give you these, I printed off, unless you have Hingham, Situate and Norwell fees.
Sure.
Um, for, for the items, because that's gonna, to me, that's gonna be a tougher sell. I, I think a hundred and seventy five or a hundred and twenty five seniors or whatever it ends up to be, it's a, oh, but people are gonna do it. It, it's when you're going through, like I did last weekend, you say, I gotta get rid of this and get rid of this, and how much is this and how much is that? Where you really, we're really gonna end up, um, on a pause with people. So that's my, my biggest concern. Um, and I think, Chris, for FY twenty six, you built the budget assuming that the enterprise fund would cover like sixty percent of the cost and you kept some, you didn't?
So we've, we've done with the budget, budget to cover pretty much a hundred percent.
Okay, okay.
We are leaving a little slug in DPW budget, just in.
Just in case. Okay, great, great. Yes.
One final question. And, um, Chris, you can maybe answer this. What are free to do? Because that's the, that's the thing I'm concerned about. Alan just said it's about, it's about the price hike. Would it be possible, you know, to inform people that it's coming, but to have graduated something over time, you know, at, you know, maybe first year you get used to it? Again, this may be an, a landish question. But to ease up. You see, like, take, they take the fees that we're charging, say, from the, what was it, uh, say, five dollars to one fifty, that kind of thing, say the microwave were ten to fifty. Say this year twenty five.
Yeah, yeah.
And then bump it up to fifty, you know, over time, but let people know that it's gonna happen. That's all I'm saying. It may take a little bit of a whack. But also I like what you said about if we can encourage people to get up there with a commercial waste on the off hours, that could offset those, those. Jack had said something about that. Could we turn it back to lowering the fees, maybe? Maybe in a case we can keep the fees down, you know, depending on what we do as we jump. You know, again, those are options that I respect Jeff's, well, so whatever worked best, is that if we, um, you know, we started out, we bumped it, like, say, twenty five for an air conditioner or whatever we had, right? But then we go hot and heavy on dumping that commercial waste. You were talking about getting up to that fifty ten limited a day, uh, that we're permitted for. And, you know, I'm thinking that could offset it. And, um, maybe, depending on how we advertise it and what we do with it. So it's, I'm just, I just put some things out there for thought. So again, I think we wanna mitigate what we're gonna get for pushback. I've already seen some of the commentary about fund. I think it's fantastic, again, I can't say that enough.
No, I think it's all been a great input. So we're gonna take a hard look at all of these individual charges and see, you know, what, what we can do for best price out there and, um, you know, any other input, please, uh.
I think the commercial, I think the commercial dumping is a fantastic idea if we could generate some, you know, from revenue from that. And, uh, so if that, again, that might mitigate or offset some of the, some of the, uh, price hikes that, that we're looking at, maybe.
So, I mean, Chris, I would normally suggest we have a public forum on this and invite people in. But as we know, we, we get less than a handful of people that come, so we're gonna have to, um, explore other options, um, on this meet, you know, I don't know if we have a Tori RTF day or something like that, but people coming in here for a forum, um, people don't show up.
I, no, I think it's a good idea, actually. We can do a lot of public education at the RTF, I mean.
Yeah.
Um, and again, you know, your points very well taken. On about those particular fees, I, I, I think, um, and people gotta understand the bag fees and.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are, and, and we, we, we actually haven't built the budget with any revenue from, from the bulk of waste. We're just trying to make sure that, you know, you don't have much too much out of it. So I think there's really flexibility there. Michelle was just gonna get different containers. Missed some spectacular, which she was just looking at, that, that looks like, like offices.
Oh, yeah, that's cute.
I heard you.
Get the split rock beer.
So, so I think it's a lot of crazy, I don't want to look as bleak as possible.
Yeah.
But I think maybe an event up there or, or some public education is a great idea.
Yeah, okay.
I'll listen to you online too.
Right, right, right. We'll do our whole usual social media, the anchor, all of that, town manager update, you know, reports, but.
We may wanna do a forum, but they don't show enough.
I mean, we, 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 we can. I'm happy to, but it's, I, I don't, I don't wanna waste anybody's time. I mean, we, we'll show up, but we can discuss that later. That's, it's not the time right now to talk about, um, when and if we have a forum. So, um,
I have one.
One, yes.
Quickly, I was gonna say, we've talked about that the people who like the boutique are a group. The people who like the boutique is the town. Okay, I mean, it, it's not just a group of ten people, it, it, from everyone I know. Select or member Plex talked about, he's hearing about it. I've heard about it from day one. And, uh, it, it, it's not just a, a, a group of people. The people who are doing the Friends of it might be a small group. But the people who like the boutique, I, I, I'd say that that's townwide.
Yeah, I, I've heard a lot of comments since the fire on, really before the fire as well.
Yeah, well, and, and you know what? I think, I think the public comments about some of the garbage, excuse the expression, no pun intended, that it was left in. That it was left in the boutique kind of rocked people. They're like, oh, that would never happen. Well, it happens. And when it happens, this is what happens. We have to close it. So, um. Hopefully it'll make people a bit more, um, diligent and respectful about this service, um. For, you, you know, swapping out items. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the, uh, Cohasset Village Local Historic District. So we're gonna discuss in your packet, there was a charge, a draft of a committee charge. Mrs. Dormitzer, do you wanna come up? And I assume everybody read the charge. It's, yeah, I thank you to David Farag, he crafted this for us, um, to look at. And, um, is there any comments on the charge? Did you have any, did you see it?
I, I actually know, yeah, I sent you something, but.
Yeah, it's very similar to what David did. I just took the names out.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, because you want the charge to live. Beyond the term of people.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so the only thing I noted, um, we didn't include a, a length of term, which we usually do. What do you think?
I think it'll be a minimum of two years.
Years, at, at least, you know, it depends, two or three, but that, maybe two and then you can extend it, right?
Okay. Some with two-year terms, okay.
Are they gonna overlap?
Well, you, you, that's a good point. I mean, typically when you start a committee, you have two and three and you appoint some people to a two and some people to a three.
This is a study committee, though, it probably will disappear once they, once it gets done. It's an ad hoc committee, really.
Yep, okay. So the mission is to explore the possibility of establishing a local historic district in Cohasset Village. To develop a report on its findings and to hold a public hearing on the proposal before its consideration by town meeting. So, I, I, I think it's pretty clear, um. I found David had asked me last night, I gave out the map, remains the same from the February fourth meeting?
Yeah, that actually is just a suggestion.
Okay.
Study committee will develop their own boundaries, define the area and then they will. Hopefully hire an engineering firm to make an engineered map with very precise. I guess it's called meets and bounds or something like that. It's, it's very legal. And it has.
But in general, that, in general.
That's, yeah, approximately.
Approximately what it is, okay. Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Comments? No?
The only comment I would say is that. Is that the, people say, when's the best time to plant a tree? It's twenty years ago. When's the next time best to plant a tree? And that's today. Is that this is long overdue. I know the, the common historic district, I think it was what, nineteen seventy-eight?
Exactly.
Done and, uh, the village was never done. And then we're here in two thousand twenty-five, talking about, uh, trying to protect the village, so. I think it's long overdue.
Okay.
I'm glad it's moving forward.
Mr. Plex, did you have anything? Nope, okay. So, um, can I have a motion to approve the class? Can I finish, please? Cohasset Village Historic District Study Committee charged with the addendum, um, for two-year terms.
So moved, second.
Seconded by Mr. Brady, all in favor, roll call.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up in our packets, then we're gonna, uh, we're going to seat this committee. And, um, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people. Um, are any of them online, Kevin? No? Okay, um, I'll just. No, I, I don't think so. You, you know, you've recruited everybody, right? Yes, yeah. Yeah, so I'm just gonna read through who the candidates are and then we'll vote them en masse, not one by one. Okay, so Clark Brewer Architect Planning Board, Martin St. John Cohasset Historical Commission. Mary Beish Realtor, Paula Morse Museum Curator. Former member of CPC and the Cohasset Historic Commission, Sean Cunningham, local business owner, formerly of the Sewer Board. Todd Goff, uh, presently on CPC or has been on CPC Recreation Cohasset Historic. And he has a master's in education, forensic studies for historic structures. Which I thought was very interesting. And Stanley Chidix owning Board of Appeals. Any conversation about these candidates?
Uh, ju- just that, um, as a part of setting up this, this committee, um, by statute, there's certain expertises that are needed. Uh, whi- which is covered by all of these people that you need as a part of the statute and setting it up. Right, so it's not just at-large members, they have to, uh, three of them have to be specifically, they have to be like an architect or from a planning board or things like that, so. Um, that's all from the, uh, the Secretary of State has, uh, rules and regulations that if you go on their website, you can see how to set up a. Uh, uh, a committee like this, so I just.
Okay, great, thank you. So, do I have a motion to approve these seven candidates?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Great, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dormitzer. Okay, now we are on to the, um, town warrant review.
So, um, quickly. So just quickly, yeah, there are no unpaid bills, I'm just letting you know that, uh, so hopefully that will stay that way. And things sometimes shake out a little bit, but hopefully that, I think we've done all the shaking, we have found it. Uh, supplemental appropriations, um, I'll just walk through this quickly, uh, even though it's not on here and. I'm still waiting on this, I don't know what the numbers are, maybe one of their holes or shares. The only other supplemental appropriation i- is what we do every meeting and that's just to move the money from the cable. Money we get from the franchise, most over the question for three teams, so. That's, that's what I'm leaning on on that. Normally I've had that. For Article seven, uh, the stabilization funds, I was appreciating she's locked. Uh, it's a hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars that will go into the open trust fund, that's more than the half. I was able to tweak the budget, so it's more than half. With our major, they picked up on the fall. And then the two point one four six is that increase further into for capital, so. Advisor hasn't voted on these yet, but those aren't gonna change. Capital, as you know, is, is wrapped up except for just a couple of things and they're meeting next Monday, so that should all be wrapped up during next meeting. Products of nines, uh, again, the challenge with this is I'm, I'm still waiting. What we're going with schools, but some of these things are pretty much locked in. Seventy-five thousand dollars from the sale of graves, that's money that sits there and so put it back into operations and use for, um, maintenance. We have contract settlement and adjustments, uh, money set aside just to, to have there, uh, as we need. And then, um, we have three more hydration stations that we want to install. One at the library, one at alumni field. And one at Peachwood.
And those will be in Article nine?
Yes, those are, now, those are the last ones, and then those will, I expect to be taken. The money's definitely there. Let's just continue as our commitment to continue to roll those out. So what does need to be voted tonight, um, is Article ten, so. Two of the revolving funds, we accidentally fell the last, so they're in here now. So advisory's rebooted, if something falls, we'll, we'll revote this tonight, that would be great.
Do you want us to do it now? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve Article ten, departmental revolving, or do I have to negate the first vote?
No, I don't think so.
No? Okay, I'm sorry.
Running on, this is an updated version of this.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve Article ten, departmental revolving funds annual spending limits as presented in the March twenty-fifth. Draft of the town warrant. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Thank you. Just discussed Article eleven. We're gonna strike Article sixteen and hold that for the fall. This is the old colony that. Town first entered this a number of years ago. We still have a little money left on the original amount, there should be enough for at least one, if not two applicants if they come forward. Um, and I just, I haven't been able to get all the. The, this was originally approved a number of years ago. I'm trying to find some of the original language and it's just been, I'm pulling teeth to find it all and I don't wanna. And it, it should be controversial in the slightest, I just don't want it to be wrong. It's, it's not, there's no pressure for it to be on this one, just you should take it off. Last one that is ready is Article seventeen. Um, that's the, um, floodplain update, um. That was voted, the, the public hearing took place, planning voted for, advisors recommended. But it motivated nothing, so that's, you know, for you folks tonight.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on Article seventeen amendments to Article nine point four? Floodplain and watershed. No questions? All right, so may I have a motion to approve Articles, or, I keep saying approve, it's recommended town. Recommended town meeting, Article seventeen amendments to Article nine point four, but floodplain and watershed, protection overlay district. Moved by Mr. Grady, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Get there.
And then announced the discussion of the one article, which will fill the slot of the, uh. The continuous in the old colony, so. I'll just take the slot.
The, this next one, town hall lease, okay. Oh, do you want me to talk about it? Or did you want?
It's up to you. So this, this is. There's been lots of conversations, there was a really good conversation with CPC, which is very exciting, and that's gonna be coming up in a, in a second. Uh, so this, this would add an article to the warrant, which would authorize town, which would have town meeting authorize the select board to negotiate. An agreement, uh, for use of the auditorium, uh, and, and space at town hall. With the not-for-profit group that's, that's been created, the Hall on Highland, I think this.
Yep.
So, uh, we need just a vote from the board to say, please grade that, because actually it's already in progress with, we're writing the council. So that'll be created, put on a warrant and then it'll come back to advisory, the new folks for, for confirmation.
Okay, great, um. Anyone have any questions about that? About the process on this?
Excited to approve it.
Well, you're excited to, well, we have to, we have to get it on the warrant. Okay.
I think if you just let people know sort of what the steps are, uh, for this, that, in other words, the authorization. At town meeting is just to authorize the board, uh, to enter it to the lease.
Right, it's not an approval of the lease.
Exactly.
Right, right. Um, so this will be Article sixteen?
For now.
For now, okay. Um, so may I have a motion to approve the insertion of a warrant article, historic town hall. Lease conversation with Hall on Highland.
So moved. I'll second it.
Mr. Creighton moved it, Mr. Grady seconded. All in favor, roll call.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Is that enough to get it going? Okay, good. Next up is our town hall, forty-one Highland Ave update. So, um, we had a terrific meeting last night with CPC. Very good, robust conversation. They were very engaged with, um. The, the Hall on Highland group and what kinds of things they were going to be doing there. Um, they understood the, um. The breakdown of costs. Um, what would be a portion to the historic portion and, and, and what would be. Um, a portion to the annex and how that would be funded through CP, um, capital budget. And, um, I felt very good coming out of last night. So thank you to CPC. I know, Michelle was there, Chris, Paul, David was on CPC. Thank you to, to Mr. Farag, who, who did an excellent job representing. Um, both the interests of CPC and the select board in this project.
I'll second that.
Um, it's very much appreciated. So I don't know if anyone else has any comments. We did, I think we have talked about maybe getting our group back together. We present to advisory tomorrow night. Um, and then maybe our group, then capital budgets will vote on Monday. And then maybe after that meeting, we should get together and figure out what our next steps are. When do you think we'll have a lease draft to look at?
So, um, I'm meeting with council Thursday.
Okay.
Discuss the lease with, um, some members of Hall on Highland to, to figure out the lease terms, um. So that's, that's gonna take place on Thursday. We should have a draft, um, probably within a week after. So if we wanna schedule something maybe for late next week or the following week, we'll have something to look at.
Okay. Mr. Grady.
Um, we've got the two groups, as we know, while putting down all the working that we, the other one we met up at, uh. At forty-one. It'd be great if we could get that group, if we're speaking, I may be speaking of cross-territories. But together, so we can socially, it'd be good to connect data book. What, uh, Nick, Brian, you guys are coming up, so we can get that into town meeting. So people see, just, we wanna generate some excitement for it.
Right, and I think it'll be important, just like you indicated, to get the group back together, to.
Yeah.
To develop the timeline, you know, if there's a positive vote, what's the timeline? What are we gonna start with? When are we gonna start? And how's the project gonna form, take form?
Right, right. So it was right after capital budget, I would say.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, I think it's very important. This is, uh, something that's a tremendous. Uh, advantage for the community. We've got the momentum going. And I really think we need to push this and get this, this done. It's been tied up too long and I'm completely in favor of it. So let's move it.
Great. Any other comments on this? No? Okay, town manager update.
So, I want to announce tonight. So, ratio of the retirements, two long-term employees, Liza Salerno, who works right here in this building. Uh, she worked before this building was here. Over at the community center. Uh, so she's. I think she's, she's excited to retire at the same time, I think it's a little bit, you know. A little bit of mixed feelings, cause, and she's not leaving, she's still looking a little bit anxious, so she, after she takes a nice vacation, I think she'll be back and helping us out, so. She wanted to announce that, so there'll be a celebration for her, uh, here tomorrow, just in eternal one. And I think people are, in, in the air, people will stop by. Uh, and also, um, Angela Geisert was retired. She's a longtime employee in the building department. Um, uh, and she's also, her retirement is also tomorrow. Uh, I'm sorry, Thursday, they're both on Thursday, I'm sorry, they're both on Thursday. Liza's in the afternoon here and, and Angela's at, um, Legion, um, on Thursday evening. So I just wanna thank them both for their long time since from the town. They're always welcome. Uh, and I, I, they, they both touched many lives and, uh, and, and really been great members of the team, so thank them both. Uh, and, uh, we look forward to the, hearing stories of their enjoying their, their next chapter.
Could I just speak about Angela? Nothing against, uh, Ms. Salerno, but. She was her secretary for CONCOM for many years. And her insights, that's a charitable way of putting it. Her insights were invaluable and it made it worth it to go to CONCOM. And if you know, been to a CONCOM, it takes a lot to make it worth it to go to CONCOM. So we will miss, you know, Angela. And enough said.
Thank you. Anything else, Chris? No? Okay, select board comments, Mr. Grady.
Yeah, I'm gonna bounce to town hall. I wanna thank everybody in this room, Michelle, Chris, Alan. David for getting up there and I wanna thank CPC. And I just wanna express, uh, and I wanna thank capital. And I wanna thank in particular Mark Cameron, but everybody who's been doing this and putting this together, this has been such a long time coming. And that's why I'm excited about it personally, is, uh. In getting it over the finish line at town meeting, I think we're finally gonna see a town hall and I'm feeling pretty bloody good about it, but. I just wanna say thanks for everybody, just for, it's been a good team effort to get it up and, and to where it is even now. So we've got one last hurdle and after that, I wanna, I wanna be up there with a shovel, putting it in the ground on the first day after town meeting.
Great, thank you. Mr. Creighton?
I would like to echo that. You know, this is such a wonderful idea and it kinda came up out of the frustration of. Getting a new town hall, where's it gonna be? How's it gonna get built? Will be here, there and everywhere. Um, and through, and suddenly the idea came out. The town hall on Highland Avenue is a special place in and of itself. So let's recognize that. And we have a strong arts community that needs a place, let's recognize that. And so finally, they've, they've come together and I, and I ask my fellow citizens to pay a lot of attention and please come to. Town meeting and support this, it needs to be done.
Thank you. Mr. Farag?
Thanks, keeping on the same issue. Uh, it's been a long time coming. I know there's still a few hurdles to go. We have to go to town meeting. Uh, but Town Hall and obviously the, the auditorium, uh, that's on the historic part, uh, has been such an important part of the town and. You know, when we talk about this, we have budgets and costs and it, we're always looking at that, which is very important. But we never talk about the other side of the ledger, which is the public value. And the public value that we lost, uh, on the historic side of the Town Hall by not having a functioning auditorium for all the years. And for many years, having a, uh, a, a smaller use of it because it wasn't functional. Um, so all the things that were done in the past, if you read about the history of Town Hall, um, all the things that it was capable of doing. Uh, we lost for many years and almost a whole generation. Uh, so to reinvigorate it, we, to bring it back, rejuvenate it, um, for this generation and generations going forward, I think is something exciting. But I just ask people to remember, there's two sides of the ledger. There are costs, but there's also the benefits and the value of, of what it brings to the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Plex?
I'm excited about Town Hall.
Could you keep it down a little bit? Okay, um, I have, I do have a few comments and I'm not gonna talk about Town Hall, interestingly enough. Um, so first off, I wanna thank everyone who stopped by, um, at the Recreation Health and Wellness Fair on Sunday afternoon at Deer Hill School. Uh, Gina Stino, who's Chair of Advisory, myself, we manned the board and committee table. And we had about sixty people who stopped by with genuine interest and really wanted to get involved, um, in, in working in the town and, um. So I would say to anyone who's watching, anyone who has any interest in joining a board or committee, please reach out to me at emar@cohassetma.gov. Or you can reach, um, the town manager's office through Tracy O'Connor. Um, and I'd also like to thank Kevin Perry for all the great graphics and the handouts that we had on Sunday. Don't be shaking your head. Nobody would have stopped without them, so, um. Thank you, Kevin, for that work, um. We talked about it. Oh, I also wanna, um. I wanna continue to encourage everyone to get the correct town information by visiting the Town of Cohasset Government Facebook page. Um, and, and our town website, watch our meeting videos or even read minutes or contact one of us for correct information. It remains challenging to get the right information out to the public without our weekly mariner. Um, and we all have acknowledged it's a struggle. And we find it's really imperative and important that we want everyone to stay engaged, stay informed, and that will allow us as your representatives to make the best decisions possible for Cohasset. Uh, last Wednesday, I attended the public budget hearing for Cohasset Public Schools. That's required by law. Um, I was the only one in attendance. Um, their budget remains the same, um, as what they presented to us at, at the moment. Um, it's a shame with all of the conversation that goes on about the school budget on, online. Um, no one, um, felt compelled to attend, um. Finally, today we got notice that the MSBA, as everyone knows, the Ausgood School roof was acce- accepted into the accelerated repair program. The MSBA today selected an, an OPM, uh, next level, um. Next level ink, I think, out of Norwood, and they selected a designer, Raymond Design Associates, out of Rockland. Construction will start June of twenty twenty-six with the Ausgood roof. So, um, again, another, uh, project that's been long in coming and is finally will come to fruition. So I wanna thank everyone who was involved in that from Chris and Michelle and Nick, um. Providing such valuable information and tours to the MSBA to get us accepted into that program. And so that's all I have. Um, so next up is approval of minutes for March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Does anyone have any comments about the minutes as presented to us? No, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Paul Brady, aye.
Hi, Jack Creighton, as usual, uh, Nate.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, we don't have any topics not reasonably anticipated, so can I have a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-five PM?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye. Mr. Farag?
Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you, everybody. Um, so we don't need a meeting for next week. I had sent out a note to keep next Tuesday as a placeholder, but we are not meeting next Tuesday. Next meeting will be April eighth.